We're ordering at 7:05. Before we get started, I think we have this picture to like that come up and call the council.
In the wake of the pit bull attack that happened to a young man in the borough a couple of weeks ago, I thought I would take the time tonight to come and catch everybody up on House Bill 1243. It's a new number now. It's 1233. And if that passes into law, it will allow municipalities to create and enforce their own dog law ordinances. Which, given the density of population here and given the rapid expansion of development across the state, you could say, I think that this kind of legislation is long overdue. I don't know what's going to happen with this bill, but at this point, I can say that this borough and State Representative Galloway led in charge with a highlight on a problem that is all too prevalent and too long ignored. And I would say ignored because a lot of communities did not want to face what they thought maybe would be the controversy that would result. Well, we've seen some controversy, but fortunately, thankfully, we have seen far greater support for what we're trying to do. I've had, I'm not worried about controversy. In recent years, I've had two dogs mauled nearly to death. One by a runaway rottweiler, one by a loose pit bull. I will never again, ever take the business-as-usual attitude of state authorities. Now, I think that they don't have the money or the manpower to respond to all these incidents, but I'm finished with this. And let me explain what I mean by that. When this bill was introduced into the House in the spring, I wrote a letter to the Harrisburg Patriot News. And that's because the Harrisburg Patriot News has a circulation of 435,000, plus all the legislators converged on Harrisburg and liked it all read that newspaper. I did get some response to my letter. The most intriguing by far was from the State Department of Agriculture, which, as you know, holds the key to all the dog laws in the state. The woman who contacted me said that, she asked me about the incident involving Luna. Luna was sadly mauled by a pit bull. She asked about the other dog owner. She asked about where it is. Then came the showstopper. She said to me, "We can do something about this." I said to her, "No, you can't do anything about it." Fifteen months have gone by. The dog has since attacked another dog in the neighborhood. And in recent months, the dog has disappeared. Nobody knows where it is. And that, ladies and gentlemen, is your example of state laws that are stringent and nobody has trouble enforcing? There are a couple of dog attack victims in this room, and not all of them from the borough. Ask any one of us if we care what breed did the damage. The answer is no. We do not care. All we want is to be safe in our yards, on our streets, and on our cafes. We also want it to be not worthwhile for any moron to harbor and protect a vicious dog. So I call on this council tonight, and I will dare to call on every governing body in this state, including Harrisburg. Please do something now. Thank you.
This is something that I think goes back for nearly seven years from when you had an issue back in the day on Chesapeake Street with pit bulls. And I know it's pre-specific. You're not supposed to be pre-specific, but it seems like there's always an issue with the pit bull.
Can I say something else?
Sure, you can stay there, because I'm going to be going back to you.
There is no dieting dog system in place that you can choose what will take a chunk out of your leg or what will tear your dog apart in your hand.
There's an article-
It was a pit bull.
There's an article right here in the New York Post. City dog goes wild and it's a little kid who was bitten in the face by a pit bull. They had, in the last six years, 4,255 dog bites. And last year, they had 3,537 dog bites. Some related to death. One, I'm reading here, 90-year-old man was attacked. Staten Island man was attacked by a pit bull and died after the pit bull attack. My argument has been, God forbid we be dealing with dogs, but if, you know, you have a child walking on the path or walking through town, one of these dogs gets loose and grabs one of these kids. You can't get a pit bull off. And it just happened a few weeks ago with the landscaper and the pit bull that we were dealing with. He literally broke through a fence. And I think we need to be more aggressive and we need to do something as a council instead of waiting for the dog to bite and then reacting to the issue. I mean, I don't want to see a kid disfigured. I don't want to see a grown-up disfigured. I know you can replace a dog, but still, I know some of these dogs are like somebody's family members still. I've been meeting with the solicitor and talking back and forth on the phone. I'm going to let him turn this meeting over. Our solicitor can let him comment on what I would like to see this council do and how we should proceed. So go on, let you explain to everybody what's going on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think what everyone should understand, under current Pennsylvania law, once the owner of a dog has been convicted of some sort of offense of harboring a dangerous dog, then there's a series of requirements that's set, which are pretty strict. The problem is, there are two things. Is to be convicted of harboring a dangerous dog. The dog has to attack a human being or to be attacked and domestic animal. And the state or the police have to prove that there was some propensity for this dog to be convicted. Otherwise, if the dog never did anything before, you kind of get a little bit bite at it. And I think we agree that, under that provision, once somebody's convicted, the law gets pretty tough. Because once you have what's called a dangerous dog, you have to post your property you have a dangerous dog. You have to muzzle the dog when you walk it. You have to have insurance. And if that dog is to get out of your premises, you're going to be guilty of a misdemeanor for which you deserve a fine. So that's pretty serious. I think that the issue that councils try and address is, what can we do before we get to that point? We all know that waiting for a dog to get out and bite a person or a child or kill a dog. What can we do before that? And that's where the current Pennsylvania law is kind of leaving. What the current Pennsylvania law says is, you have to confine your dog. And basically, you have to confine it to your premises either with a fence or with a chain. It doesn't say how strong the chain has to be. It doesn't say how high it is. It also says that if you're walking the dog, it has to be under your control. That doesn't require you to have a leash or a chain. We think that's too weak, okay? You can drive around this town and you can see dogs who are easily able to jump over somebody's fence. We don't think that's reasonably confined your dog. What Representative Galloway's proposed amendment will do is will allow each municipality on a case-by-case basis, does not have to be all municipalities, to try to address the needs in their community. In our case, we try to tighten up that confinement law to spell out more clearly what you have to do to confine your dog. And if the dog gets out, whether it bites somebody or not, you're going to be fined for that. Because it's your obligation to take reasonable means to confine your dog or keep it under control. So in a sense, we're trying to make it tougher so people don't think they have this one button. "Well, my dog gets out and does some serious damage. I didn't know anything about it. Eric, you can't do anything to me until the next time." But we, that first time is serious enough. We don't want to have to wait for that. So what I'm going to recommend to the council is two things. Is that, under the current confinement law, that we really enforce that rule. If somebody's walking down the path and their dog is running 30 feet from them, then that dog is not under their control, okay? And they can be subject to being fined. I'm also going to suggest that perhaps we amend our ordinance in the borough and kind of define what confinement means. It means you have to have a fence that is reasonable and strong enough to hold the dog. It has to have a gate with a lock. You can't put up a particular fence that you know the dog's going to be able to break out, okay? So that's what I'm going to recommend. We're hoping that the legislature can see our way and will allow us to even go further. And again, that would be us. If, you know, the rural community doesn't want to do that, that's their prerogative. For right now, we're kind of tying our hands, and obviously, there's a problem here. And we're hoping to get this resolved because something is real serious. We haven't developed it, you know, as late, lacerated. We just had an incident. Yesterday, for a small dog, it was literally ripped out by a bigger dog. Right in front of the owner. The owner and the dog owner also had injuries that required assistance. We want to be able to prevent this before it happens, not wait till it happens and then happen. So back to the discussion, council, we're trying to do the best we can under the current law. Hoping that Representative Galloway can help us up down the line. We've already waited a year for that legislation, and it's not even out of committee. Because I don't even think it's out of committee.
It's still in committee, yes.
So who knows, it may sit there for years.
I'd also like to get somebody involved, and we talked to somebody, you know, on the volunteers time, where he would walk the path, we would swear him in his, like he did our other animal control officer. And he would walk the path and walk it down. If the dog is 10, 15 feet away from an owner, to me, two feet is the required distance from an owner. If you're saying your dog should be confined, that person gets cited. If you have a kid walking a dog that's 10 years old and she's walking a pit bull or she's walking a dog, she has no chance, or he has no chance, holding on to that leash if that dog takes off. That, to me, isn't confined to the dog. And I think we need to get aggressive. I think we need to start citing people. Give them a warning first. Take their name. Write the name down and put it on record that it was a warning. Next time, they pay a fine. Next time, they pay another fine until they get used to what it means. I have a dog. I mean, you know, I always say my dog don't bite, don't bite. You never know. You never know when the dog is going to turn on anybody. And, you know, and we have pit bull owners, we have lab owners, we have poodle owners, but if my dog or a poodle or Robyn's little Ben and Jerry bit somebody, it's not as big as a pit bull or somebody locking on to you that just rips apart. They do not let go. I see our animal control officers here. That dog that we just dealt had to be one of the most vicious dogs you ever-
Thank you, Rob.
Nobody that owned that dog is here, because I'm going to ask our guys in the other rooms that are videoing this meeting to put up three pictures of this dog. And I know we put the dog down. I don't want the people or the kids that had that dog, you know, sat there showing the pictures. So even if they're watching at home, you know, they can take their kids in another room. But I want you to see with this dog how powerful and how big this dog is. We would have no shot with this dog.
It's burning.
I happened to go Saturday morning when this happened. The dog was around building that homes. And it was one door away from where I am. The landscaper was out there cutting migrates on two properties that I don't own. And when I heard what happened, I wanted to see if the kid was all right. This dog literally broke through a stockade fence. And there was no chance they were hitting it with a weed whacker trying to get it off. That's it. It's hard to see in this picture, but the claws on that dog have to be about an inch ahead of two inches long. Can you see the claws on the upper paw? And this is down at the borough dog count.
This is a dog that was taken from there?
This is the dog. The collar on that dog has the choker collar where it can pull and try to hold it back. And they had a chain that had to be at least an inch or more around on this dog. We got very good at this. Two pictures. So, thank you. Although, you know, they hate to put a dog down and they hate to, you know, because it was somebody's pet. It was somebody's pet and somebody, you know, was attached to this dog. But they went after two people prior to this, am I correct, though? That barely made it into their gate when the dog was jumping against the gate. So this dog was a vicious dog. There's nobody that's going to control it. The girl's mother who lived there told me she was afraid to go to her daughter's home because how much they feared this dog. So I think our solicitor's right. We've got to build off of the state law. We've got to get more aggressive. We've got to make sure people start controlling their dog, keeping their dog confined. To me, is right next to, if you don't want to put them on a leash, that's fine. Because there are no leash laws in Pennsylvania. But I think that we have to now step up before somebody seriously gets hurt. You walk the path, there's dogs all over it was. And I think we're at a point now where there's people in two and three pit bulls. I mean, I don't know, you know, what it's going to take after a bit. I mean, I know our- Is Dominic clear? I know Dominic's been our lead point person. Sergeant Lorenzo on this and has been up to date on all the laws and still everything he can. But we need to do something as a council. Anybody else like to call on this subject? Sorry, you want to come up and say your name?
I have a plenty of time to handle. When we have big dogs, which I have, I have a five-year-old lion.
All right, but if we don't push hardly I can-
I did run over courses, six, seventeen courses. I run my house there from the alley, okay? And my dog, all right, is confined like that. It's worth a fence. Gates, all up. He can't make a fence, okay? He just runs up and down the fence. Run into the house, run into the front of the house. You have to skate it off. It's flowers, okay? So he can't make the initial jump. It's always has a six-foot. But I'm trying to say, you know, you're going after big dogs, basically.
Same, hand dog.
Right. But I'm talking about, what are you going to do with the houses? Out of the impressions, I'm going to give him a six-foot fence at home.
No, what we're saying is, the state says you must confine your dog. How you confine the dog is just like you said, your dog's fenced in and he can't get out. That's fine. If the dog gets out, then there are issues that you have to deal with by the laws. But we're not telling you, you got to change your fence. We're not telling- We're telling, a lot of people don't have any fences. They put these six-inch spikes in the ground. And the dog rips the spike out in 10 seconds when they want to get out of the yard. So what we're saying is, confinement means you got to make sure your dog's confined. And we're going to enforce that law.
Like I'm saying, you're going like, no, I understand what you're saying, but the dog go after the kid. So you have, you know, certain dogs, especially mine, he's pretty well taken. His family's, you know.
That's how you raise a dog, too.
Exactly. Thank you.
But we're not, I mean, we talked about the dog is so hard, you should have to double that fence. But when we really looked at the state laws and our solicitor looked in all that, it can be a kennel in your yard. You know, you can buy one of them pre-made kennels and the dog stays in it. You want to put it outside. Three foot high, but it's got a gate and a lock on, so he's in there. It could be a steel pole in ground with a chain that the dog can't break. So confinement means, if we ride past your house and your dog's over that fence and somebody walked and bite and get bit, then you're not confining your dog.
Well, mine doesn't go under, he goes under the fence a lot, so when people come over to the house, if that dog didn't know, he'll put his paws up on top of it. But other than that, he can't run, jump over it unless you're siding him. Definitely do that. That's what Mr. Chairman said.
Anybody else on this side of the room who wants to speak on anything about these dogs? Anybody on this side of the room?
Tom Rowe, Kerry Tarns. So a dog's becoming a luxury? Is that what's going to happen? If you have to pay for a dog, and then you have to pay for dog food, and you have to pay for fencing, this is an added expense, I mean, not-
An added expense to-
To the dog owner.
Does the dog want to feed the dog anyways?
Right, but you're paying for the dog-
Why don't you guys like the fence so we can identify?
You're paying for the dog food, and then you're paying for the dog. Some dogs can go from $200, some of them $1,000. And then you have to pay for fencing, wouldn't the dog then become a luxury? Some of these fences, you know, if you, in the original story from the attack that day, the dog escaped a six-foot fence. So if you talk about pit bulls that can break these chain-linked fences, so then the fence, would you pay like, what, $3,000 for a fence? So then it becomes more of an expense. Then somebody wants to get a dog, maybe will want to get a dog because it's really expensive to build a fence.
First of all, the dog didn't jump the six-foot fence. It broke through the six-foot fence.
Right, so you need a roof.
And if the fence was in good condition, it probably would have never broke through the fence. But if you look down the side of the house, you can see all the pickets that this dog was knocking out. That's not normal for a dog to knock out pickets unless you have a vicious dog.
Right.
And as far as being a luxury, my job here today, and I'm going to recommend to this council, is to protect somebody's child from getting mauled again from the dog.
Right, I understand that.
Doesn't matter what they call. You can't put a price on a child. So if you want to own this dog, you're unplay by our rules from now on. And you can print that in. You know, getting back to what you're saying. I sit here, month after month, year after year, trying to do as right for the people of this town. When somebody brings their, this kid from the New York Post whose face is ripped open, and I got to sit here and say, "I didn't do my job as a councilman to protect this kid because there was a dollar amount that I have to put on it." A homeowner, they may have to put a fence up or may have to- You shouldn't own a dog. If your priorities, my priorities are to protect this kid, and I don't want to have them under my watch.
Mr. Chairman, I wasn't going to say anything tonight, but I have to address that last issue that just really struck me as strange. My name is Joe Nelson. I'm from Los Naveen with the police board. Owning a dog in many ways is a luxury, just like owning an automobile. But it doesn't mean you can't have laws. We have laws regarding automobiles. They must be inspected. They must meet certain standards. You know, we must have a driver's license. They must be registered with the state. Because you own something does not give you a privilege or a right to infringe on other people's privileges or other people's rights, including the death or injury of their beloved pet, whether it be a cat or dog, whatever the case may be, or, God forbid, a child. So yes, with anything you own in life comes a responsibility. You have to take that dog to the vet. You must give it shots. You have to get rid of these shots. Along with ownership comes responsibility. And all we're asking is, here is what you are responsible for as a dog owner. And I personally agree with this. This should have never happened, however, God forbid, it happened twice. Once in a lifetime would be more than enough. So I commend council in taking a proactive stance on this and start going out and let's do something. What can we do as citizens to get the legislature to move off their rear ends up there? That's the key. As a municipal county, we should have the right, as elected officials, to pass ordinances stricter than state government that protect our people. Because like you said, Mr. Chairman, things out in the middle portion of the state where it's very rural are entirely different than what we have here in a confined area with heavy population. So somehow, you know, put an article in the paper or whoever we can write to or email or solicit, you know, the legislature to get this out, or maybe give it on the House floor for a vote. Thank you.
Has anyone come up and say your name?
My name is Beth Fisher. I'm on West Street. I will repeat everything what I did to what you just said, because I'm sorry, that was completely ridiculous what you just said. If owning a dog means you have to be able to afford a fence, then yeah. You have to be able to afford a fence to afford a dog, because my son is more important than having a dog. But I also wanted to ask, do we really, or are we going to really have the manpower to address this? The dog that attacked Luna was supposed to have the insurance. He was supposed to have the sign up. He was supposed to be blocking the dog with the muzzle. He didn't do any of that. And I realize we only have so much manpower. Are we going through all of this? Are we going to be able to really do it? Are we going to be able to really enforce it?
I think we are, because if we have to hire more people part-time, put off the street, then that's what this council's going to have to do. Because our main objective is to protect the people that want to freely walk through town, walk to the past, push their grandchildren in a coach, and not worry about being attacked by a dog. That's what we're supposed to be doing. So whatever it takes, we need to do.
Mr. Chairman, one quick question. With all the cell phone cameras, I mean, they have updates. Can the solicitor answer, "We saw something like this killing a dog or a vicious dog. It wasn't being muzzled. It was somebody we knew that was previously determined to be a vicious animal." If they kept that on their cell phone on a date and time, could that be used evidence in a court of law?
Well, your testimony would be enough. I mean, if the officer would just use the photo, it would be your testimony. That would support your testimony. But you would need to testify. If you're something, if there is a dog that's been eating a dangerous dog, then I would let the police know and then violations under the act, and we'd make them incited. Anybody else on this side of the room?
I think we need to push the state to introduce a leash law, so we can add one. That's one of our biggest problems as far as people walking in town. Now, I'm a brat, and although he weighs 100 pounds, I mean, he's absolutely huge, he's a big chicken. If a dog is loose, the only hope Brett would have to be safe is for me to take him off his leash, then he can outrun that other dog. Other than that, he'd be done for, because they don't fight. They don't jump, they have to be taught, they don't climb, they have to be taught, they also don't fight. So, that would be a big help. The other thing is, I know a lot of people see a large dog, and they automatically think it's vicious, because it's a certain breed or it's a large dog. And we all have to remember that that's not true. A friend of mine has a pit bull who, she's victimized by a family cat. She plays with two African red parrots and my brat, and assorted children. You say sit, she doesn't. She doesn't understand fighting, but she's never been exposed to that. I think the dog was bit, Phil, I heard that had scars on it, that's a pretty good indication it was trained to fight. Yes, different types, just like people, you know? The thing is, you have to hold owners responsible. The animal can't help what it is. It's the owners who make it the way it is. And I'm all for enforcing the laws we have and even strengthening them. Just like with parents, you have good parents, you have rotten parents. You have good daughters, you have rotten daughters. As a matter of fact, there's several kids in my neighborhood I think need to be put in cages, because the parents obviously didn't do their job. The thing is, you have to remember, not everybody's gone like that.
No, but we're not saying that. What we're saying is, the likely of being attacked by a dog that's that powerful. And if you got bit again, going back to a small dog, you're going to maybe go to a hospital and get a tetanus shot. When you get bit by a pit bull, they lock on, you can't get them off you.
Yeah, they don't let them...
It's a powerful dog.
And that is an issue.
It's not just here, I mean, it's everywhere, it's New York City, it's everywhere that pit bulls are attacking people and killing them.
I know, and this is why we have to enforce the laws and make sure they're enforced. Again, that brings up the manpower issue. The man whose dog attacked Luna, he didn't hear the court's orders at all, period. The minute he didn't, someone knew that the dog should be removed from him. Because the dog eventually is just going to be put down anyway, because obviously, it can't be around people and other animals. You're just going to have to enforce what we have, and I do really think we need, and the state has to learn this, we need a leash law. For the animal's protection as well as other people's protection. And that's where they're lacking, and I agree, we gotta stay on that.
The attack on Saturday morning, two people were both walking their dogs on a leash, talking to each other, the dogs were side by side, and this is one of them rescue dogs, and the dog just turned for no reason, grabbed this dog in its mouth and shook it like a rag doll, ripped the dog's back open. The two owners were trying to separate, the one owner got stitches, the other owner fell and scratched her hands in butterfly stitches, and trying to pull, they don't know what this, why this dog just turned. But that's the problem. The problem is, you never know what's going to happen. And they're dogs, they're, you know...
Well, like, just the same way, I mean, I could step off a curb, we can hit by some other side.
Exactly, so what we're saying is, you need to confine your dog, and you're going to enforce that law.
We need to do that.
So, the people in this town feel free, if they want to walk down the river, or they want to walk down the high street down, they feel safe. They don't have to worry about it. Dogs, I mean, what I also found out is that mace, or maybe you can, the dog has no...
Tear ducts.
So, regular mace will not even stop a dog, you need a mace that's a police officer use to stop this dog. So, a lot of people that are walking with mace isn't even going to stop a dog because they're tear ducted. So, we're going to get a handle on this, I mean, you know, like I said, I've been dealing with this for seven years with Liz. We called John Galloway a year over, a year ago, to play play with him, and that's all part. But in the meantime, we need to protect the people that pay taxes, want to walk this town, walk the path, and not fear they're going to get bit by somebody's dog.
Well, the only thing is, I really think we need the people in the state to at least incorporate some kind of leash law in their dog law. I think that, for one thing, we have to...
The question is, if they allow us to adopt our own laws for each town. People up in, where they got 15, 20 acres of ground, they want their dog to run free, that's fine. We're on, you know, 50 by 100 foot lots, so, then you go down a street, there could be 13 dogs in 40 houses.
I know.
So, you know, and I have a dog, so this is not on age dogs, I mean...
I know, loves his dog.
I love my dog. I can relate to that, I can say.
Actually, I was asking you, when I said, I like your dog, you said, that's a kid's dog. Okay? No, but anyway, I just think that we need to enforce the laws we have, we need to educate people, that's another issue. And we need a leash law.
Thank you. Anybody else on this side of the room who want a dog issue?
Hi, my name is Kathy Prayer, I'm 1102 Wood Street, and Luna is my dog. Just a comment to you, as far as the cost to the owners, my dog's surgery cost $2,321 and some odd change. The person whose dog attacked my dog is supposed to make restitution, I've taken him to court, he still has not paid me back. He's not that great of a person, lives two doors away from me, what do I do? Do I put myself in some kind of harm trying to get my money back again? Do I confront this man, who is huge when my children play outside, right there? I'm a little stuck right now, I do intend on talking to him, because I would like to be paid back for the cost. He owned a rent, or not owned, he had a rental property that had a wooden stockade fence, and you could see patchwork on the fence. His dog ripped apart the fence, my son witnessed it, knocked on his door, he wasn't even home. He left his dog outside and he was not home. And my dog was ripped almost in half, two feet away from my then five-year-old daughter. And that's the problem that I have, this man left this dog outside, who has broken out of the fence many other times, and wasn't even home to watch the dog. And I have a problem with that. And he did not have that dog contained.
Can I quote you, if you want to repeat that again?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else who would like to speak on this dog issue?
My name's Paul Winslow, 738 Coursewood Street. I have some concerns about the size of the dog, and when the owner takes the dog out, or whoever from the household takes the dog out. I have two small dogs, Lasso Appsons. And the other day, I went out to get the mail, and I went to my front door with straw glass, and there was a fellow coming up the alley between Coursewood Street and Spring, and he had a Rottweiler, which was about, looked to me about 90 pounds. And this guy only looked like he was about 130 pounds. He could not control that dog. He stole my dogs at the door, the dog, and he pulled him from across the street where the houses are, all the way up to my front yard. I had to fucking close my door. And I've also seen some pit bulls that are small now, that are being taken down the alley between pining doors, and my children on leashes. So, is there anything that can be done about what size the dog is and who can control it?
Well, that's a word, I think what you're saying is, confinement means, if you have somebody walking a dog, whether it's on a leash or not, that can't control this dog, well then that dog's not being compliant. So, we can study that person.
And I'm also the emergency manager coordinator, and I go to all the events down in the Lions Park in the summer, and I've gotten numerous complaints from mostly older senior citizen females about the pit bulls that are walking through the crowds on leashes. And they just come up to me, and they say, you know, we're just scared to death, we see those dogs coming, we get out of the way. So, I don't know if, you know, maybe there's something during an event that we could not have the dogs going to park anymore. We haven't had any incidents with any dogs or anybody getting bit, but, I mean, the possibility is there.
Thank you. Well, is there any, that, like, I think Joe or somebody was saying that Dominic maybe answered the question, I know you have to have a license, a dog, you know, shots and all these things. Is there somewhere where you could call and get a, like you call tag in, you get a response back, the dog's licensed, not licensed, shots? Dog has a...
Not on that, or... Well, in Bucks County, you simply can't, you simply call the radio if it has a tag, and it'll tell you it's registered. If it doesn't have a tag, obviously, it's either not registered, or it's not where it is tagged, it's one or the other. But we can check if it can. For other things, you can actually, which I have done, called the Department of Agriculture in Harrisburg, I call there, and I need to be assigned to verify, depending on what information I'm looking for, it's mostly compliance information. Once a dog, once a person's been found to be a very, very dangerous dog, they have to comply with certain things, so... And once they get that letter in the mail, they have to comply immediately according to the letter. I usually give them some time, and if it's something I have to keep track of, I'll give them a little bit of time, then I'll call Harrisburg. And once they confirm to me that they haven't complied with the conditions, then I take it to the next level, for prosecution.
Dominic, how would a neighborhood know? Is there any, is there any way for a neighborhood to know if there's a dangerous dog, who's been identified as a dangerous dog in the neighborhood? Megan's Law kind of thing. Can you let neighbors know this dog's dangerous, he's been identified as being a dangerous dog?
I'm not aware of any notification mechanism in the statute. Whether that can be done by local authorities, meaning us, to the neighbors, I don't... That's probably something the solicitor can answer, but there's no mechanism in the law, no notification mechanism in the law, I'm aware.
Is there a way that we can say, every dog owner in town must register their dog with the bar?
My guess is, that, that again, could probably will come in conflict with the state law, because you're asking, that request itself might be more stringent and require, more stringent requirements than the state allows, which is what they're telling us we're not allowed to do. Which is the whole point of this, one of the whole points of this meeting.
You're required, required to have a license with the county.
With the county.
If you find a dog that's not, it could be something.
Yes.
As far as the notice, there's no requirement, the state can notify, but once your dog is determined to be a dangerous dog, do you have to post your property with a sign that says, dangerous dog?
Dog, shoot, I think Ralph and Ralph, what he was asking was, can they be required to, uh...
Have a registration.
To be registered, exactly, registered with the county, registered.
And what I'm saying, we insist, the board or whatever, that every property in this town, if you have a dog, you must register with the bar. And then we can, then we can find out if the dog has shots, if the dog has its license, by then, call...
Well, well, register the dog, and hurry the registration, show the registration tag for where it is registered.
But I'm saying, if you get every dog registered, then we can require every year, for then to have a round, so then you send in a form that says, my dog has all his shots and is registered this year.
We use the same registration that the state and county use. You know what I'm saying? Just get, do the same thing.
Just say, you have to, you have to show what you're registering. But I'm asking, I need to say a copy.
Well, I mean, that might be more people than, oh, it's a, it's a registration license.
Anybody that can speak yet that wants to speak on this dog issue?
I was just going to suggest, maybe you could contact the county, and they could send you a list of the people that registered for the bar, I'm sure they could get it out of the computer.
That's the other thing we can do also, I think, to encourage 100% participation in the licensing aspect of it, is encourage the county to be able to do it online. I think right now, just every year I go up to, up to Five Points, and get the license of the dog getting out. But we can redo our driver's license online, and our vehicle registration online through the state, it really makes it convenient. And you sit with the computer, some people may not be able to make it up, especially the elderly people, but they can do it online through a credit card, they can... Maybe we should take a real leadership role and say, hey, Bucks County, is there a possibility we can do this? And if we can do this, can you send us the end result, how many of the dogs are registered with the bar? It's modernization, I mean, something we could really modernize, and maybe just sit down, it's beautiful, with all the people that are with, with the appropriate tag on. But right now, you physically got to go to Five Points to get a record.
You can go to any audit time place.
Or any audit time place, but, you know, but you know how lines mail to you, move it to court, because they charge essential fees on that doing.
Yeah, Jared, now, just a couple things. One, Liz and her family should be congratulated for the tenacity over the last 15 months in trying to get this challenge up. And Ralph and I, and I'm going to say the same thing to you, and then rest of this council, trying to get this wall changed. But just listen to what we've talked about for the last hour, and that's really the whole point of the problem. We know there's a problem in this town with vaults, and every town in this neighborhood. The thing that handcuffs is, is the state. We just sat here and went through a whole litany of things that we know, that we want to do, that we know will make it better for the town and for the people living in this town. But the state is the root of it, and that's what we can't test. And every time we get to a point where we think we're helping, and they're going to pass the law, some, a dog group, or some other group will come in and say, or a newspaper will read an article saying, we're focusing on pit bulls, or we're focusing on large breed dogs. We happen to talk about that a lot, because that's what's happening in our town. A lot of the larger breed dogs, we're having problems with, and we're concerned, because council president's going out. But the major problem is, no matter what we do, if we put a leash law, we can't do it, because it's more stringent than the state. If we require you to do X, we can't. You want to have a license and register with the bar, we can't, because the state says we cannot do that. So, I think one of the things that would really be awful, is that we either start a letter writing campaign, I know Liz, I know you said, numerous petitions, you know, and our state representative, John Galloway, has been excellent to John, in trying to get this passed, and that's something Ralph put out. You know, in rural areas, people often have farms and so forth, their dogs are, you know, free, and they call their legislators up and say, don't you dare live with that dog? I live on a farm, my dogs be able to run. We're 1.5 square miles, 1,000 people, you know? It's a luxury to have on a dog. It really, it really is, I'm dog owner also. But the challenge is, you impact, everything we do, we impact on our neighbors. So, bottom line is, we can sit here and we can pump yard again, unless the state changes that law, and I recommend the council, and our solicitor, looking into a way we can get, not around the state law, but integrate with the state law, maybe a little bit more stringent state, if we can do here. But the bottom line is, we can put it in place, and the state can rule it. So, we got to get that state now changed, that's our...
I just want to make it clear that the Women's Aid Society, the SBCA, and a pit bull owners organization called the Low Gully are, are acknowledging that's with this bill, they support this bill, because they have this standard protection that it gives tank pit bulls and other animals, as well as every other...
Okay, before we come back there, does anybody else want anything with the dogs in the council? Give me, I know you just walked in, but you were discussing this dog thing, I don't know anything.
I just think it goes without saying that, I'm just, no one wants to say one injury is quite a lot.
uninjured, like, uh, I'm, I'm not sure, uh, how far this thing has gone with Galloway. I remember when, uh, he brought us, uh, years ago. Maybe, maybe what we need is a committee to make up a couple rooms, the council, a couple rooms, or the, uh, the committee, to, to encourage, if, if our hands are tied because of state law, and, and we, and we, we can talk about Galloway all we want, but we need to bring it to a meeting, we need to bring it here, and, and we need to say people in the back of the room to tell Galloway, they're coming up. But we gotta encourage those people to, to get, get with it, because we have a problem.
We had it.
You have it?
We had it.
So, we may, we need to get it.
Press it off, press out, bounce it in.
They got problems with it. We're totally yours.
You just need someone to label it, of course. And then every time it's issued, you know, coming up with that, the easiest way is to change the state law, wire it up, and ask the council.
Yeah, common sense needs to prevail sometimes. I live across the street, I can see the owner's backyard. They have a well-managed backyard, a fence, you can even walk down the alley now, go past their house, 'cause now it's all the bikes and blacktop. You wanna go ahead and walk there. And that's how simple it is. It's a luxury of taking care of your dog.
Yeah, a friend of ours said, you know, just said, "What do you want?" Right. Okay.
It's not just common sense, it's responsibility. Responsibility for your animal that you chose to take care of, to bring up, to put in your yard, to feed, to have a fence for. Because my son's dog, I was walking the trail, 4:00 in the afternoon, and a ball, a pit bull jumped out of the fence and attacked it, and it was an American bulldog. The coat didn't blow off. We, she went crazy, it was, it was a terrible scene. Now you have these four upset dog owners at the dog hospital, paying all this money, when you take them to court, their renters, they disappear. They don't take responsibility. It's done, it's an issue, it's gone, they left town, dog's gone, you're stuck with the bill, you're, you're traumatized, and nobody cares. Nobody cares, because they don't care, because they're not responsible. So when you can't be responsible to take care of your pet, whether it's a pit bull, a bulldog, a German Shepherd, whatever, we're not picking on a starting breed, we're picking on vicious dogs. If this is your pet and it's vicious, you should be held responsible. If you're renting, that owner of that home should be responsible. Somebody has to be held responsible. And if it's luxury to have a fence, well, be it. Because if you're in that situation, you're...
Now, my, my bulldog, how beautiful.
Now, I, I agree with what my other council members have said, but I just wanna stress again, how, how, how much you expect to happen to the entire Fisher family. I mean, it's unfortunate that this horrific incident has caused you to come to the forefront, but you're right, it's very, it's unpopular, it's controversial. And I also applaud, you know, the people who have come tonight, and Council members, and, and Council President, each executive, because it's not a popular thing to talk about, but it's real and it's here, and I think it's good that we all, we all discuss it and, and come to some kind of a, of a, 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 what's the word?
Sense.
I agree with that, that's how.
So, from what I understand, granted, an alter right to solicitor to advertise the proposed ordinance, and students are great, that we can get it advertised. Is there a way ahead of that? Okay. Just somewhat taken back, that if any young, tough reporters in the area are wanting to make them, says, to report it, I'm sure you'd get that question to, to that here. Other than that, just make sure reporters are charged. Okay. Okay.
Just two things. One, we're still waiting to hear on the fire prevention grants, there, there haven't been any awards yet on that, so, we're still in the running. The second thing is, the Knox boxes have been provided to all the fire companies, three of them have been programmed, the fourth one needs to be programmed, and three of the buildings in town currently have Knox boxes.
Great. Any questions for her? I'm gonna come back to the audience in a few minutes, I'm gonna just credit some of our people.
Just a couple things. Our detective Sergeant Morris just returned from an extensive fingerprint classification school. It's one of several, and, the end product is, he said it was the most difficult class he's ever been to, but he learned a lot, he brought a lot of useful information back. The end product of that is, once he's done the entire series, he'll be on the road to becoming a certified expert in classifying fingerprints. And what that does, that'll cut out a chunk of time during an investigation that you would have to take to send something out to FBI, the state police, he could classify it right there at the station. So, we're waiting, that's, that's a great class. Over the past month or so, we had an unusual amount of thefts from vehicles, and, and we had a rash of burglaries, too. So in response to that, we set up a, a special detail several weeks back, and we, we targeted the areas that we felt that we were gonna hit again. And we put officers on the street and scoured the, those areas, from late at night to the very early morning hours. We put them out on patrol, foot patrol, in plain clothes, on bicycles, and in unmarked civilian vehicles. And, after many hours and some help from local residents, we were able to make an arrest of two people caught in the act of breaking into vehicles. They're in prison last week, and since then, we have not had one theft of a vehicle since they've been incarcerated.
I'm glad you brought that up, because I, I knew you can't say anything when there's an investigation going on, but there were so many people stopping, saying, "My car got broken into, my car got..." And you wanna tell them, and I know the mayor insists probably more than anybody, that we had people walking the streets during the night, we had cops, I mean...
Yes.
In plain clothes, walking the streets, doing things in unmarked cars, and, I mean, we were out there, but it's very hard to hear a window break that quick, it's, they're so, you know, the tool they got is just to glass showers, and they're in the car. But, I mean, just so the residents of this town know, that our cops who are on foot patrol are actually walking streets trying to catch these people for the last few months.
They wanted them in custody as bad as the victims did.
That's what people do, so, and everybody says, "What are they doing?", and, "What are your cops..." I mean, when you put cops out on foot patrol, walking streets during the night, trying to catch somebody, that's the things that we're, how aggressive we are in a town that nobody really realizes. So, Arnie, it's a great, I'm, I'm very happy that you brought it up.
Also, over the weekend, we made a burglary arrest of a subject who we're also looking at for other criminal acts throughout town, so, we had that rash of burglaries, and the method, the way those people were getting in, we're keeping an eye on that to see if those occur again while this person's in custody.
Right. But I mean, when, when somebody says to Chief or Mayor or member of council, "There's some drugs on my street", or, we know, we know, it's just a matter of us, we're gonna get them, it's just a matter of time. It's, you know, it isn't that we don't know, we're not doing nothing, we're, there's a process, and sometimes it takes a little bit longer, and, but we're being very proactive on the street right now. Anything else, Chief?
No, that's all I have right now.
Any other things for the chief?
Yeah, chief, last one, I remind you about a stop sign on Firegate Pond. Where we at?
Um, myself, the solicitor, council president, our traffic investigator, all met with Gilmore Associates, and they came out, and we looked at three intersections, that intersection being one of them, and we're looking for them to make a report on some recommendations. They will be recommending something at that location you're interested in.
You were, you were, you met the engineer?
Yes.
Mr. Bill, I requested, in my letter July 8th, I requested the, I mean, I was on the engineering board about the, what was that?
No.
Why not?
I'll first, quickly, I will speak.
Well, the letter to receive, your office on July 8th. When was the engineer?
Several weeks ago, I don't recall what date it was.
Well, but the main thing is that he was out there, and they are looking into moving that stop sign, also eliminating maybe two stop signs. The one coming from Firegate Avenue headed towards Mill Street, and the one heading from, uh, coming up from Jefferson to, uh, Green Lane. So, we're waiting for the...
Jefferson, Green Lane.
At that island, the one coming towards, uh...
Jefferson, at, at the Womond Road.
We had, we had a speeding problem along Firegate Pond, where they come together years ago, and, and I thought that was a great idea, the way they put the stop signs in there. And, if, if you looked at the proposal, does that make sense, to move that stop sign back?
I think the engineer was looking at the idea of traffic flow versus using a stop sign to slow down traffic, 'cause you're not supposed to use stop signs to slow traffic down, it's mainly used for, at approaching your sections.
There's a stop sign there now, but I'm putting it in. There's already a stop sign.
But there was indications while he was on scene, that why do we need that there? And that might be one of his recommendations. We don't have his, his end product yet.
I'm only waiting for the engineer to come back with his proposal.
And might be notified when he comes back?
I really be notified.
Go ahead, Chief.
What else do you have to start with? I said we're starting with Q gum this way anyway, so it's not a Q gum.
Well, okay, let's, let's go back to my letter, which is on July 8th then. Well, isn't that the letter? Uh, the first thing I mentioned was the swimming pool award. I attended the Golden hearing, uh, meeting on July the 10th, and they really didn't wanna discuss it. They said it was a council issue. I said I'd hurry back. Now, I gave Mr. Bill on the list, maybe 11 properties. What's the status of it?
Well, right now, the inspector's been out, I think, through all 11 properties. They're all receiving letters stating that their pool and mayor may not be legal. And I think, finally, he went out the other day, or, or went out the other day. Wish I would have figured it were in the next couple weeks, I'll get that.
Yeah, I think, I think that the pools that these people have, these addresses, are active as well. I really don't see a problem with pools.
You're turning them in, not us.
A problem, a problem.
Okay. Thoughts, thinking that, or, you want to...
According to the ordinance, the way you want to interpret it, is that people have two front yards, and they don't have two front yards.
No.
Okay, there's a 20-foot setback from the front, and you're taking 20-foot from the side. Even if it's in the backyard.
Do you know if the curbs, that corner property are two fronts?
It doesn't mean four, you can think about it. More pro- property typically have larger lots. Would you agree with that?
Sometimes.
Most of the time, they have larger lots. People live on the indoor road, have a larger house. The guy next to them on the inside, he puts a pool in the yard, whole, whole pool, right? But the guy in the front, man, does that make sense?
Well, nobody, no, because they're putting the pool in their backyard.
Well, that's taking out, this is now a matter of cement. It's a lot of cement.
Right.
What's the backyard?
To me, the backyard is when your house stops and you have your backyard, it's your backyard.
It's the back of the house, the back of the lot.
That's what I...
Even if it's less than, than 20 feet from the, from the side yard. If you don't have the backyard.
It's not...
That one, yeah. If you're counting, if you're counting, it's long from the side.
I'm just giving my opinion on this whole thing. I looked at the property, and it hasn't quite, not, not to be a little conceited, but I can just give you my opinion on this piece of property. The pool that you're requesting would actually be on the corner, the front corner of this property, because there, there's no side yard to put it on. Am I correct? Because the side yard can't be more than 10 feet. So literally, this pool would have to sit on the corner of Wilson Avenue and Harrison Street.
That's a fact.
Well, I don't, it's not our decision, it's somebody's decision. I don't bear it, if, they're allowed to put a pool or not allowed to put a pool. If you wanna change zoning and eliminate this, that's fine, it's such a process we have to go through. But, you know, because this...
I like the team doing it.
Because this lady didn't get her, or doesn't wanna go in front of zoning, she made me grant the pool. You wanna turn in 11 more people that have pools, and so if that's why you're saying, "Well, I didn't get my way, so I'm gonna turn..."
We have, we have spots on this now?
No.
Some people have it, some people can't.
I'm not saying that, what I'm saying is that, how do you even know that these pools are illegal? The one pool you gave us on the corner at 8:00 o'clock of, uh, Manson Street, it's a blow-up pool.
It's 12 feet high.
I don't think so. But even though it's a blow-up pool...
It's 2 feet high, it's blown in the earth.
Well, you know what it makes me, every, you gave 11 houses all over town, not one pool in there.
I didn't see any of that.
Maybe, you go down, once you have, I mean, there's a pool, a blow-up pool on corner lot. You go on, uh, uh, Tate Street, there's a pool on, on that corner lot, right? The resident called me about it, I told him to call you. But, and it's amazing that in your own ward, you can see one pool, but you see them in everybody else's.
It makes you know that people that go on my, my ward, it's noticeable by what I like, they're not in permanent.
It's, it's so out of line with it.
Okay.
The ordinance, you wanna change, uh...
I don't wanna change my ward.
That's fine. They need a location to get that done.
What do I need to do?
Well, you need to know what they're warning, what you want, how you...
Oh, I don't know, yeah.
But I'll share.
I'll come back to you, Rob.
Take your mic.
Um, next manager, look at the property between Seaver and, um, last property. They have a place that, uh, they care, I, I'm not sure if I can wear it, it's, it's terrible, I think, I think they're sorry, it's, uh, had, had run this property. The rear back. The area between where the fences, between Seaver and the property, because it seems the residents, they take care of, the back stretch over there, it's a little... And, um, I'm paying a lot of them a couple weeks ago, so where the guys did it, they did a good job, picked this, this sign, I see it, put it on the table. That's it.
Yeah, a couple things. First of all, I think you met George Walton, he did a great job, he coordinated everything from the north corner, moving over to the road program. The gentleman, Mr. Podles, from, uh, the general last fall, said he's never had so much cooperation, and he... Also, we had some, uh, it was, I felt bad, because we were both on his vacation, but he emailed a couple of phones, hoping he wouldn't be answered, but of course he did, it was 15 minutes. And we had a couple situations in the north corner, I guess because it was new when we started there, and there were some issues with the roads. George got back into his right wing, and, uh, he's gonna get to the spot of properties, we're gonna get there, as soon as he's done, with the rest of the town, they'll have the engineers come in, and so anyone who did cause group law problems, George will be back to get it. On Saturday, I had the opportunity to go to Spotlight in the Littlerman's Temple on Wollens, she had a community day. Patterson Graham did just a wonderful job, she had people from all different walks of life, just give them information, and that's all it was about, people were getting...
Uh, just giving information, and that's all it was about, people were getting information. Uh, they had, uh, our police was there, Laurie from our inspection department, she had the county state, she hadn't let across, uh, our vice president, who didn't know, was a real estate agent, and she was the head of the real estate. One thing that's made, Crystal Park, the reaction room, a former classmate of mine, Jeff Fisher, helped run this. And they feed people. Well, the state of Pennsylvania can't pass their budget. So if they can't get past their budget, they don't get their allowance, and they don't have to buy any comparison to yours. And then Jeff looked at me, he says, he sees hungry kids. There's kids in this town, we could want to, but there's kids in this town, they don't get to go to school, they don't get to eat. Because the school district provides them the right food to the state, and they provide them a horse. Uh, I'd rather say anything to anybody who has it right now, and anybody that can watch it on TV, if you give it to it, bring some non-competitive, ninety-nine Wood Street, Russell, so that these kids can get fed for the rest of summer. You can even bring here, K English, it will be normal to them. But please, help, because once our little kids are eaten, then we have a problem. We need to get our heads out of the ground and take care of them.
That's the way it's out of it. Dirt, comedy, not.
Good action.
Good action. Especially for. Next thing you'll.
Ready to see out.
Great.
She can't get out.
Yeah.
Can't take her anymore.
Sadly, here you did a job, did a lot for Lily because, uh, two weeks ago, I'm over there a lot, she did a really good job. Also, I was basically waiting, did a great job, I wasn't here last, last month, but I'm two grand. Monday, we're having a presentation, a slide presentation about the summer camp. Cindy really did a great job, and the whole staff. So, the head.
Yeah, I was a, uh, thank you to the corporate and cultural association, for one of the festivals on July twenty-sixth. Uh, it was different, it was educational, it was really nice, uh, I had a really good time. They did a really good job, and this was their first time doing it, and they really pulled it off really fast, so, um, congrats to all of them. And the summer rec room, without a doubt, was probably one of the best rooms we've had in a long time. The kids enjoyed it. Uh, I saw some really crazy videos, and, um, some dancing, some little ball, just fun. But the kids, it's a beauty, I think, you know, to be a little bit of a, a member of that. A little, uh, party.
We want to say.
Uh, I just want to comment, and you can tell me about, about the, uh, food bank at ninety-nine Walton Street. If you guys remember, about six months ago, I pledged my monthly, um, paycheck, uh, hundred and seventy-eight dollars, forty-six cents, and I took it home.
It was.
But anyway, I, but anyway, they're also bringing, bringing me to cash, if you remember, a few months ago, there was a thing on the front page of the newspaper. So, anything that anybody can do, and I think it's great that anybody thought about that, brought up the attention of our residents. So, help if you can.
Yes, come for next, next holiday meeting, if you want to call this meeting, break English. Back in a minute.
And that's good, and that's good.
Everybody break something.
Yeah, but isn't your today? Like, all the organizations, uh, are you going to a line this, and we go, we go to the staff, and they take it? Huh?
Sure.
Yeah, well, same here.
Yeah, I did, I read a lot for.
Yeah, but does this all go, I don't know, go to which, we have different.
Bring him to you, Max.
If they're, uh, border, actually, what the, huh? I'm talking, you go, listen to me. No, but seriously, they do, and I know the line is stuff, it's anyway, you know, they, uh, collect food and, you know, one girl, president, she, I don't know, Richard, they, but, something, they're calling it, they're children.
Actually, you can do that money, like, bring your food here.
Yeah, but that would be.
Your pension meeting, and we'll have the fireworks, you can order it over in a minute, but I did.
Challenge to every year.
Now, move on, show off, show off. I want to use your great office.
You don't should bring your pool. Taking it back to you, that was a thing.
Uh, yeah, I had a couple of complaints, uh, in fact, on the road, we're in about, maybe residents were, once they, once they paid the fee, weren't even giving it enough time to shut up before the, the quarter back on. Uh, is there a recommended time?
There, as soon as they're done, you can draw them.
Really?
You're alone, circle. Technically, they're watching, kind of charging, which usually takes an hour or two, you know.
And then if you want to.
Sorry, just, uh, honoring the technical. Then they open the door.
Who does it, in general?
They are engineers. Our engineers are out there doing action tests, the depth of the road, and they're pulling off.
Okay, there you go, so you're going to be quarrelled in.
All of them. Four, five minutes, all certified, who's stable, who's, who's stable, who's.
I hate to see, I hate to see you wrote that, because people got on.
Those have stuff marks on roads, but that's nothing. You're very good at stuff marks because of the technical.
Okay, most is not a problem, I don't know, that's all I have.
Anybody in the audience have anything for, I just got a couple of things, real quick, I'm sorry. A word, I'm a.
Good evening. Um, my name's Pat Mulholland, and I own Transformation Fitness and Wellness Center, and, uh, and in our personal training, um, company that we, so, that we service, Box and Mountain County. Um, we have, uh, wanted to invite council to try, uh, a kayak tour. Um, we finally were able to secure insurance for the kayaks. Um, for some of you that don't know, we have kayaks, uh, at the gym, we are wholesale for Hobie kayaks. Uh, they, they manufacture the, um, Hobie cats, which are the cat marines. So, very well engineered kayaks, and, uh, wanted to extend our invitation to council, to the mayor, the chief, um, and the solicitors. Uh, we were hoping you'd be able to attend on, is it August twelfth, to the Wednesday night at about six o'clock. Um, if you're unable to attend, you're welcome to send somebody, uh, to represent you, and it kind of give you a better, um, idea of, of how these kayaks work. Uh, they're very unique, not something that you pedal, or paddle, they actually have pedals. Um, just to give you an idea, very hard to try to give you a visual on it, but as you pedal, if you're paddling here, they go out this way, and they displace the water, and propel at about ten times as fast as a cattle would. Um, and you know that the, the river is, uh, swift waters, um, you need that type of, uh, uh, get up and go, uh, on the river. Um, they're a lot easier to control, um, and I think the best way to really get the feel for it is to, to go out and. I don't know, are you guys something, guys? One of the things we really try to do is find the main products for our clients in home, and also at the gym. Um, that, that you create an activity that's fun, sometimes challenging, but actually gets you out and, uh, and, um, you know, like the Trix, I'm sure you've all seen that, Trix, I don't know if you're there. All of our, uh, all of our, all of our people are properly trained, okay? And on the. This is Wednesday, August twelfth, at six o'clock. Um, the kayak tours are, we're doing it by appointment, so we have small groups, um, employee groups that are, are holding their kayak tours, and we'll do them at your times that you, you know, are available and where it's convenient for your particular group. We also take them out during the carnivals and festivals that we have on Mill Street, um, and back at. On Mill Street, I, I really want to, I've been involved with the borough for a very long time. Came before this board a few times, and also with, uh, Bill Salerno on the planning commission. Mill Street, you guys have done a wonderful job of creating the environment of a wholesome family and community place. Um, I think now it's really up to the community to kind of embrace it and, and stake their claim now, um, and decide what they want down on that street. Uh, it's, it's the borough workers, they do an incredible job of keeping it clean. Police, um, can't say enough, uh, you know, we get all the help we need down there. And it really is creating, at least for, for our gym, um, a much more of a community feel down there. And, uh, really want to thank you all. Um, any questions?
Uh, can I remind you that in Twitter?
Yeah.
We'll be in the kayak.
And don't worry about the, uh, the, the very sturdy, uh, crib. You'll have a heck of a time.
Any consideration, like, it's very uneasy, like, if you get solar late or something?